I'd like to call to order the Placer County Planning Commission meeting of January the 14th, 2021, and if you'd all rise with me and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone to the new year. It's important for Placer County to conduct our business to ensure essential services for our citizens. We're doing everything we can to facilitate residents staying at home and physical distancing. We encourage the public to engage in the process. With that in mind, our public comment for this meeting will be offered in person and through a remote virtual process. Citizens who wish to comment today that did not call the reservation line prior to the start of this meeting should be prepared to comment via the Zoom platform. To join virtually online, click on the link on the Planning Commission homepage. Please make sure your microphone is muted. You may also call in using our toll-free numbers to hear the meeting at 888-788-0099 or 877-853-5247, and please enter the webinar ID 974-666-4238. Please press *6 to mute yourself. If you would like to make the public comment virtually, please raise your hand with the hand icon at the bottom of the page. If you are calling in, please press *9 to raise your hand. Please be prepared to speak at the time I open the public comment for the specific item you would like to address, which may include public comment for matters not included on the agenda, a consent item, or a timed item. If attending in person today, we kindly request that once you have commented on your item, return to your seat or leave the hearing room from the exit-only door to accommodate for physical distancing and allow for others to provide in-person public comment. Each commenter is entitled to three minutes of comment time. Thank you for your patience as we work to preserve the safety and health of all meeting participants and to assure that each citizen who wishes to comment has the opportunity to do so. So at this time, Sue, if you could call roll?
Yes. We'll start with Mr. Cannon, who is absent at the moment. Mr. Johnson is on his way, and just Mr. DiMattei.
Here.
Mr. Woodward.
Here.
Mr. Hersag.
Here.
Mr. Sevison.
Here.
Mr. Haugie.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, the Chair asks for the Planning Director's report.
Good morning, Chairman. EJ Valdi with the Planning Services Division. I think first, congratulations to all our appointments and reappointments. Commissioner Haugie, you've been reappointed to the Seat Five. Our new Seat Three is occupied by Commissioner DiMattei, and Seat Four, Commissioner Woodward. So congratulations. Rich Johnson also got appointed to our at-large west of the Sierra Crest seat, and he's not in attendance at the moment. But congratulations to y'all. When I get done with my quick report, if you wanted to say a few words of new commissioners, feel free to do so. For normal business, just at the end of last year, the board meeting on December 15th, three items that your commission recommended approval to the board were taken up and all approved. That included the Williamson Act contract for Patricia Beer, the Placer Vineyards property 1A small lot map, Tahoe Basin area plan, housing-related amendments was the last one, and those all were approved. The next board meeting is going to be January 26th, and the Mason Trail subdivision is scheduled for that meeting. For the upcoming Planning Commission, on January 28th, that'll be our next meeting, and that will be a 4:30 in the afternoon start. Hidden Falls Park expansion will be on that agenda, and that specific item is scheduled for 5:00 p.m. We have one or two other items prior to that. And then we will have a meeting in the first of February, February 11th, and then we'll be back to the 10:00 a.m. start on that one. So in closing, Chairman Haugie, just want to thank you for your leadership this past year, especially during the pandemic when we were transitioning between a hybrid of in-person and virtual meetings. You did well. Your patience, your guidance led to some successful meetings, so thank you for your chairmanship.
Thank you.
And with that, when I get done, and if the commissioners have any remarks, we'll go into and take care of the oath of office. Our Planning Commission Clerk, Sue Colbert, will administer that, and then we also have a selection of officers as well. So with that, I can turn it over to Commissioner Woodward or DiMattei if you have any comments, and then back to the chairman.
Thank you guys very much for having me. I look forward to serving the community and bringing some of my ag knowledge to Placer County. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is Dan Woodward. I thank you all for the opportunity to serve as well. I really appreciate it, and I look forward to getting to know everybody and working with everybody to do great things for the community.
All right. Some brief comments. I want to first of all welcome Anthony and Dan to the Planning Commission, and also to Rich when he gets in, in a new position. And I also wanted to thank Jeff Moss and Wayne Nader for the work that they've done over the last number of years and the assistance they've given to me in those years. So appreciate that very much. All right, at this time.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Larry. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to suggest, if I could, because of the strenuous situation we're in, where some people can come and others can't make it, and it's very difficult, I'd like the commission to consider maintaining the slate of people we currently have as chairman and vice chairman, because we've had so much carryover and so much difficulty, and a lot of new faces to get used to our way of doing things. I think it would be a big help to keep some continuity, and so I'm going to suggest that we consider that. Thank you.
That item is going to be after the swearing-in, so we can bring that up again, Larry, in just a minute.
Okay.
So at this time, Sue, if you would administer the oath of office for the Planning Commission, the new commissioners. And I guess when Rich gets in, we'll do that separately for him? Is that correct, Clayton?
Correct.
All right.
Do we know when he is going to show up? Is he? Okay. Yeah. We can just take a break.
Okay.
Okay.
So Sue?
Okay, if I could have Mr. Woodward, Mr. DiMattei, and also Anders Haugie, please stand to take your oath. And please, when I pause for your name, state your name and repeat after me. I
Anders Haugie.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend
Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend
the Constitution of the United States
Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of California
and the Constitution of the State of California
against all enemies, foreign and domestic
against all enemies, foreign and domestic
that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States
that I will bear true faith and allegiance
that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of California
and the Constitution of the State of California
that I take this obligation freely
that I take this obligation freely
without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion
without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion
and that I will well and faithfully discharge
and well and faithfully discharge
the duties upon which I am about to enter
the duties upon which I'm about to enter
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sue, if we could just do that oath one more time, please, for Commissioner DiMattei?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Was I supposed to do it at the same time?
Yes.
That's okay.
It works. This works.
Yes, this is all right.
All right, sorry about that.
Okay, so I
Anthony DiMattei.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States
do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic
and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic
that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States
that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of California
and the Constitution of the State of California
that I take this obligation freely
that I take this obligation freely
without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion
without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion
and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter
and that I will and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, it's time for the selection of officers of the Planning Commission, and we asked for nominations. Larry, this would be the time, I think you already made your statement. Are there other commissioners' comments or recommendations? And it looks like, Clayton, we select each officer independently?
Yes, so you would take a motion and vote on each one of these independently?
All right. Right, so Larry has made his recommendation. Do we have other recommendations?
Well, are we starting with the first, with the chair?
Yeah, we would start with the chair, so I guess we do need a motion then.
Well, Larry.
Larry, did you want to make a motion?
Sorry, what'd you say?
Did you want to make a motion for the chair?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd move that we keep this existing chair for another term because of conditions beyond our control, and then we assume the change every year. Thank you.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a first and a second. Sue, roll call.
Yes, thank you. We will start with Mr. DiMattei.
Here, yes.
Mr. Woodward. Mr. Hersag.
Yes.
Mr. Sevison.
Yes.
And Mr. Haugie.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. We need a nomination for the selection of vice chairman.
Well, I'll go ahead and move that Larry remain, Mr. Sevison remain as vice chair.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Do we have a first and a second, Sue? If you could call roll?
Mr. DiMattei?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
You're muted.
I'm sorry, Mr. Woodward?
My apologies, yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hersag?
Yes.
Mr. Sevison?
Yes.
Mr. Haugie?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. So the Chair asks for a nomination for the selection of secretary? And Larry, if you could make that motion, I think Nathan probably shouldn't.
Well, I guess, who would be next in line?
Nathan would be nominated. Nathan?
Nathan?
Yep.
I'll move that we, no, I nominate Nathan as candidate for secretary.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All right. Sue, we have a first and a second. Roll call.
Yes, Mr. DiMattei?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
Mr. Hersag?
Yeah.
Mr. Sevison?
Yes.
Mr. Haugie?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. So I guess I get to sit here again. I will now open the public comment for any matters not on the Planning Commission agenda, and we'll wait for any raised hands. We have a raised hand. Could you come forward to the podium? And you have three minutes.
Good morning. My name is Jane Wurst, and I am part of Protect Rural Placer, a grassroots organization dedicated to protecting and preserving rural Placer County. Welcome to the two new planning commissioners, Anthony and Dan. And it's also great to see familiar faces. My husband Kurt and I would like to extend an invitation to all of you that haven't had a ride-along tour of the Hidden Falls expansion area. We would appreciate the opportunity to show you the winding roads, the highly combustible terrain up and over Big Hill, and our rural communities, which are identified as a wildland urban interface. For those that are new to the commission, the Hidden Falls Trails expansion is quite a controversial project. Trails group members from far and wide have been solicited through trail websites to speak up, advocating for more trails. The actual residents, the hundreds of families that live in the vicinity of the park expansion from Garden Bar on the Lincoln Side to North Auburn, widely oppose the trail expansion due to increased wildfire danger, evacuation concerns, the narrow and winding roads with scores of blind curves and blind driveways, the demands it would put on our first responders, increased trespassing and crime, and how it will undermine agriculture and the rural lifestyle in communities that are zoned farm. We do not oppose recreation, but we do believe that docent-led hikes and activities are the only way to maintain the balance of nature, agriculture, recreation, and the safety and security of residents, their families, homes, livestock, and property. At the October 27th, 22nd Planning Commission meeting, the residents felt that they were heard and validated by the commission's request to push pause on the project so that numerous issues and errors of omission in the SEIR could be addressed by the County Parks Division. They will be coming back before you, maybe as soon as January 28th. You will weigh in on whether they have thoroughly addressed all of your concerns and ours. So I encourage you to take the ride-along tour with us and learn more about the project and see firsthand what we are concerned about. I have given our contact information to your clerk, Sue Colbert, with the request that she pass the information on to you. Thank you for serving on this commission and for putting in all the time it takes to be well informed. Thanks.
Thank you, Jane. Sue, do we have other? We do, so.
Ms. Waller, please unmute your mic and share your comments. No, she's no longer
Ellie, you're on mute?
No, she's no longer on the line.
Oh, she's not on the line.
This is the R. Stewart. I got a notice to unmute. This is not Fuller. I'm just listening.
Okay.
So I think you're the wrong person. I'm just listening in.
Thank you.
Thank you. There, Ellie, you're on?
Here she is.
Okay. I thought I saw her mute go on.
Ellie, your hand is up. Go ahead and unmute, and you can make your comment. You have three minutes.
Hello, Ellie Waller?
There you are. We hear you.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate that. Just having a little technical difficulty. Hi, Ellie Waller, 20-year Tahoe resident. Tahoe is now my backyard. Welcome, new commissioners. I participate in many different meetings in Placer County. It is still in my heart. I want to thank all that applied for the at-large seat west of the Sierra Crest. With that said, I am disappointed that the Board of Supervisors chose to ignore the significant public outreach for Wayne Nader, and he was also recognized by Commissioner Jones. Richard Johnson, as well as the others, were all qualified, but Wayne still stands out as the front rider with all his exemplary service. The explanation that wildfire interface protections and Richard's background in that arena being the prevailing reason was somewhat short-sighted. I want to state that Wayne served on Placer Consolidated Fire District Board from 1998 to 2006, as five years as the chair. This was not considered and omitted with all his other accolades and support. I'd also like to say now, what happened to Decorum? Wayne served for eight years, and the Board of Supervisors didn't even thank him during that meeting, which I think should have happened. It feels like the Board of Supervisors was trying to silence an important voice. I'd like to thank Wayne personally for his dedicated service for many years, the time he took to understand the issues in Tahoe as well as the western side, and hope to see him in another position again. Thank you for the opportunity today.
Thank you. Sue, do we have anyone else who would like to speak?
Uh, no.
All right. With that then, I'm going to close the public comment period for matters not on the agenda, and we will move on to the consent agenda. And would any commissioner want to remove the consent agenda item, which is the minutes from our last meeting? And tell you what, how about we pause? Richard is here, and he needs to be sworn in, and then we can take on the consent agenda.
We're going to have you stand and raise your right hand.
Your statement should be on your table there somewhere, Richard.
Take your oath. We're going to swear you in.
Yeah. I guess he didn't have a statement, so I guess.
He did not?
No.
Should be in.
Now he can swear to his mileage.
I'm going to give you Anders. Okay, if you'll repeat after me, Mr. Johnson? Aye, and then state your name.
Aye, Richard Johnson.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic
and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic
that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States
and I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California
that I will take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion
that I will take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion
and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter
and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter
Thank you.
Welcome to the commission.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So now, moving back, we're on the consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
Chair, if you could, I think it would be proper to see if there's public interest in removing an item from the agenda.
Ah, sorry?
I doubt there will be any, but.
Okay. Is there any public interest in moving an item off the consent agenda? And do we have anyone raising their hand? I don't see anyone here in the audience. No. All right, so we don't. So let's move on. Is there a motion then to approve the consent agenda?
I would make that motion, since that was your last time.
Yes, you were. Okay, second? We have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a first and a second. Roll call, Sue.
I have a first by Mr. Johnson, a second by Mr. Sevison, so a vote from Mr. Johnson, please.
Yes.
Mr. DiMattei?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
Mr. Hersag?
Stand.
Mr. Sevison?
Yes.
Mr. Haugie?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. So we're moving to our first timed item, which is a workshop on the Placer County Agricultural Beekeeping Ordinance. Members of the public may now raise their hands, press *9 if you are calling in, to begin queuing in for public comment on this item, which will not begin until the item presentation is complete. Josh Huntsinger, Agricultural Commissioner, will be making the presentation on this item. So Josh.
Well, good morning. It's a pleasure to be with you. I'm really pleased for the opportunity to present this item to you today. This is an informational item, just to share some information with you to help you understand the purpose and intent behind this initiative, and then, of course, I hope to bring back for you at a later date an action item with the draft ordinance for you to make a recommendation on. So thank you for that opportunity. Again, my name is Josh Huntsinger. I'm the Placer County Agricultural Commissioner and Sealer of Weights and Measures. Can we pull up the presentation? Okay, there we go. Okay, I'm actually in control here. This is great. So there's several different issues that I'm hoping to address through a new beekeeping ordinance. We do have an ordinance on the books right now. I'm going to cover that in a minute, but it is fairly deficient in its ability to provide us with the tools we need to resolve some fairly common conflicts that we have out in the community around land use and beekeeping, and so I will cover that background. There's also, in addition to resolving some of those land use conflicts, also a discussion that we've had around expanding the opportunity for backyard beekeeping along with other types of home gardening. I'm not sure if any of you were on the commission when the issue of backyard chickens came up a number of years ago, that was another similar type of idea that the county did approve, where it was previously disallowed, and this, I would characterize that in a similar fashion. So I will jump into my presentation here. So again, so first of all, Placer County is very supportful of keeping of bees. Honeybees, scientific name, Aphis mellifera, are an important part of our economy. They're an important part of agriculture, and they're an important part of our environment. There's many, many crops that depend on honeybees for pollination in order to produce a crop. Without honeybees, we wouldn't have those crops. There's also a lot of benefit to different types of plant species in the environment, and of course, they provide honey and other products as well. Pollination, the biggest thing in California economically for pollination is our almond crop. Almonds are the single biggest crop in the state of California. There's about a million and a half acres of almonds statewide right now. Almonds will not set a crop without honeybee pollination, and so every acre of almonds in the state, with few exceptions, depends on at least two beehives being placed in that acre of almonds during the bloom period to set a crop. So if you can imagine, we have about a million and a half acres of almonds, that means we need at least about 3 million commercial beehives in the state in order to produce our almond crop, which is our biggest single crop by acreage in the state. So just that alone is a pretty big factor that plays into a lot of the other dynamics around beekeeping. The price for almond pollination has steadily risen over the last 20 years or so, and that is part of what's driving some of the dynamics that I'll describe here in Placer County in just a minute, so that's why I mentioned that. So just to give you a little bit of character of our beekeeping industry here in Placer County, state law, which I'll cover in a minute, does require each beekeeper to register on an annual basis with the Agricultural Commissioner. We have right now 78 separate beekeepers registered. 57 of those are based in the county, and the rest, the balance of those, are based outside of Placer County but keep bees here. There's 169 separate locations, so many of those beekeepers have multiple different locations where they keep bees, and that equates to about 16,000 registered beehives. So it's not a small number of beehives. Additionally, we estimate that there's about a third of our beehives are out of compliance with our registration requirements and are not registered. And that gets to really some of the conflict issues, is that, as with many industries, the majority are responsible people who do things the right way, but then there's sometimes a few bad actors who tend to cause problems. sometimes a few bad actors who tend to, um, cause problems that tarnish the name of the industry. So, um, we're, we're actively working on that, doing outreach. My staff is out doing outreach. Every time they see beehives, they check to see if they're registered, and if not, we have informational flyers, we actually have the authority to hop the fence and staple them with these really obnoxious bright pink flyers, which explain to the beekeeper how to, how to become registered and come into compliance, so, um, so we are actively in that process of improving that number of, uh, an estimate of one-third unregistered beehives. So here's our current ordinance, and as, as you can imagine, this is a pretty minimal ordinance, it's in our zoning code, and it says, "Be raising requirements and standards for bee raising activities shall be as required by the agricultural commissioner." And that's the entirety of our ordinance, it says, whatever I say goes, which on the one hand can be thought of as a, granting me a lot of authority and a lot of discretion. The issue is that there's no set standards, there's no numbers placed on anything, but it puts me, so it puts me in kind of an arbitrary or opinionated kind of a position. Um, you know, I think we try to use a reasonable man's, man's standard, uh, coupled with some subject matter expertise that we have in my office to say, "This situation is reasonable," or "This situation is excessive or problematic." Uh, but there's really no specific standards that we can point to when we say, "This is too many beehives on this property." It, it's really subjective in an opinion when we say that because there's no standard in our code. Um, so typically, the things where these conflicts arise, uh, we'll talk about in a second, but it, it's, they, water source, it's related to water source. People struggle with a lot of honeybees in their swimming pool or something like that. Uh, it's just too many bees placed too close to someone's house, or beehives placed in close proximity to another beekeeper. So beekeeper A has had his bees there for twenty years, and then beekeeper B comes in and puts a whole bunch of hives right next door, basically forcing beekeeper A out in some, in some circumstances. So th- those are some of the, the typical conflicts that we try to mediate. Um, so as I just said, too many beehives in one place, too many beekeepers in close proximity, and then we're hoping to also address the issue of no allowance for backyard beekeepers in our residential, single-family zoning, and, um, so we'll talk about that. So what is the issue? This is, this photo I, I included here in the presentation, just because this is what, I'd estimate two to three hundred beehives, I didn't count every one of them in this photo, but it's somewhere in the neighborhood of two to three hundred beehives in one location. And this location looks like a pretty rural one, there's no houses right next door, and so it's probably not creating a complaint or a conflict in this particular situation, but when you have this number of beehives placed right next to somebody's house, especially if that house has a swimming pool or something that the bees gravitate towards, it can be just highly problematic to the point of creating an untenable living situation for the homeowner next door, the neighbor. So, as we started this process, we did a bunch of outreach. The first thing I wanted to do in really recognizing the need for an improved ordinance was to make sure it was gonna work for our beekeepers. So we had, um, two very well-attended beekeeper outreach meetings about a year ago, um, where we walked through, what are the issues, what are you struggling with, what could we do to alleviate that, what have other counties done to address some of these issues? We're not reinventing the wheel, um, we're looking at other counties and other cities and what they've done, and what's been successful in other places. And so we, we have those two meetings, and out of those meetings came the bulk of the solutions that I'm gonna talk about, uh, what we're gonna propose. Uh, we also have been keeping the agricultural commission informed of the progress, um, and especially at the July thirteenth meeting, uh, that was very well-attended by the beekeeping community, and they provided some additional input, um, along with the commission, and we went back and made some modifications to what we were gonna propose based on that feedback. And then, um, many of you are, are used to the, the MAC process, where, uh, recommendations come to you after being vetted out in the community through the MACs, and, and that opportunity hasn't really existed in, to a large extent, this year. We did, uh, participate in a North Auburn, uh, Town Hall that was available earlier in the summer, or late summer. Uh, but beyond that, what we did as an alternative to going through the MACs, because we, we recognized that we couldn't do that, is we set up a website, and that website had what we called a virtual MAC presentation, so we actually recorded a video, placed it on that website, and then, um, working through our Clerk of the Board's Office and our Public Information Office, we emailed that website link out to all of the MAC members, all of the MAC mailing lists, as well as out through our Public Information Office, um, channels. One of the results of that was that KCRA Three picked up that story, actually interviewed me, and, um, we got a lot of traffic through KCRA's coverage of our, our, of our efforts on this topic. So we had, uh, a really good traffic on the beekeeping website, and that generated, we had a specific dedicated comment email, uh, address set up, and we got a lot of good feedback through that email address, um, I think based on some of that media coverage, as well as the, the outreach to our MAC members and our community. So I feel like it, it has gone through a pretty thorough, uh, community outreach process to date, not quite the conventional process we've, we're used to in the past, but in the, in today's, today's COVID situation, I think we've, we've done a pretty decent job with that. So we're also not gonna duplicate in county ordinance, we're not gonna propose to duplicate in county ordinance what's already in state law, and there's a significant amount of requirements for beekeepers in state law. Uh, as I mentioned previously, the state law requires each, each beekeeper to register their beehives with the county ag commissioner on an annual basis. It requires the hives to be marked with ownership information, so if there is a problem, it's not just a bunch of random, unmarked white boxes out in a field, but you can actually get that ownership operation, ownership op- information, if I can talk, uh, off of those beehives, because commonly or frequently, the beehives are on property that does not belong to the beekeeper, they're, they're, uh, they either rent the land, or they have some kind of an agreement, often, uh, honey is the rent payment for the, for placing the beehives on that land. Um, the hives have to be maintained free of disease, and that's a big deal because, um, bees are not quite as loyal as you would think to their own hive. There, there's what they call bee drift between, um, hi- different hives, and so if one hive is diseased, as it starts to die out, either bees from another hive will come and steal the honey from that weakened hive and bring back any disease or pests with them, or the bees just kind of, you know, uh, on occasion, end up going, you know, ending up in the wrong hive that they don't belong to, and in either case, um, they, it can really spread disease or spread pests if they're present. So beekeepers are required to maintain their bees, uh, free of disease and pests. And along the same lines, for the same purpose, uh, beekeepers are also, uh, required to maintain their equipment in such a way that it's not accessible to bees and that it's kept secure. And that's one of the things we see out in the community at times, is a beekeeper is just storing a bunch of empty bee boxes out in a field, that's actually illegal and something we're trying to address with them when we see that. Um, because again, if those bee boxes have some kind of disease or pest in them, other bees come to remove any residual honey or anything like that, and it can spread, spread that pest or disease. So let's get into the meat of what, what, what will be proposed. I, I realize there's no draft ordinance in front of you today, these are conceptual, we are working on kind of the fa- final touches of polishing a draft ordinance for review, but that document is not ready today, we're still working on it. But we're gonna define a commercial bee yard as a location with ten or more hives, and the reason for that is that there are a number of small beekeepers that don't, that may not use their bees in a commercial fashion, um, and there's a different standard that we wanna apply to them versus some of the commercial standard. That's also paralleling in state law, an exemption to where if you have ten or more hives, you have to pay a registration fee, where if you have less than ten hives, you still have to register with the county, but you don't have to pay the registration fee. So that's that same breakpoint as state law has for the registration fee. So at the commercial level, which is those bee yards, which is, you know, just a location where someone keeps bees, uh, for tho- for those commercial bee yards, we're gonna ask that they, or require that they be located one mile apart from each other. And that's a, that's a really big deal, because the number one complaint of our beekeeping industry, to me, is that scenario I previously described, where one beekeeper has had a location, a good location, and these are hard to come by, you know, finding a good location to keep your bees, and a landowner that's willing to allow you to keep their bees there, it's a hard thing to come by. So when you get a good yard, you really wanna hold on to it, and what happens is when another beekeeper places a bunch of bees next door, it overwhelms the neighborhood, and that creates two problems. One is for the beekeeper in that, what they tell me is, "There was just enough nectar and pollen sources to keep my bees fed, and then when this other guy put two hundred beehives next door, now my bees couldn't, were no longer self-sufficient, they couldn't feed themselves because there just wasn't enough nectar and pollen in the neighborhood, and so I had to start feeding my bees," which is a huge labor and cost expense, um, and that is very undesirable to them, and basically makes that, that bee yard unsustainable for them. The other, uh, thing is just overwhelming the neighborhood from that conflict standpoint with the neighbors, having, one bee yard may be okay, but tipping that, finding that tipping point where that second bee yard really just overwhelms the neighborhood. I tell the story of, uh, a place down near Loomis I went to, where there were four five-acre lots, and one of the lots had a house on it with a swimming pool, one of the lots had a horse boarding facility. The other two lots were vacant, one had two hundred and fifty beehives on it, the other one had a hundred and fifty beehives on it that belonged to somebody totally different, unrelated, and so that same kind of twenty-acre little block off of a cul-de-sac had four hundred beehives, a horse boarding facility, and a house with a swimming pool. And I was able to write a letter to code enforcement saying, "That's, that's excessive," but I didn't have any of these standards to say, "You can't have both of those, beekeepers cannot keep their bees that close in proximity to each other," it's just the neighborhood was just completely unlivable almost at that point. Um, the second point, or the second major provision in the proposed ordinance, along the lines of the same story I just, or anecdote I just told you, is to limit the size of commercial bee yards at a ratio of five hives per acre. And that is, that is a number we came up with that seemed reasonable, it's, it's not necessarily based on, and I can't point you to an exact scientific, there's a reason for it. Um, we could pick a different number if, if you have serious concerns with it, but what that does is it allows, for instance, on a five-acre parcel, it allows twenty-five hives, on a twenty-acre parcel, it allows a hundred hives. It, it's, it's, the intent behind it was to scale it so that the larger parcel you have, the more beehives, and that's just, the, the tighter your confines, you know, we allow beekeeping in most of the, uh, or all of the agricultural zone districts, including residential agricultural zoning, as well as the farm zoning, where we have, in our A zoning, you're seeing occasional two-point-three acre parcels, and the farm zoning, four-point-six acre parcels are very, or zoning is very common. And so having a hundred beehives on a four-point-six acre parcel probably isn't gonna work if, if the neighborhood's kind of in that zone, zone area where, you know, maybe on that two-point-three acre parcel, your ten hives is, is perfectly reasonable. So, um, so that's kind of the intent there, and then twenty acres and above, we're proposing to limit the total size of any bee yard to one hundred beehives. So, doesn't matter if you're on a hundred acres or on twenty acres, you're still capped at one hundred beehives. And the intent there is again to say, from that sustainability standpoint, it's really, when you get much above that, it, it's just the, the kind of the hazard there, and the ability for bees to be self-sufficient really goes away. We, this was the most debated point in the ordinance with the beekeeping community. Um, Nevada County's ordinance caps it at forty-eight beehives. Um, I also had, and there's some beekeepers that really advocate for that, and they said, "A hundred's too many, you're really even unsustainable at a hundred beehives." We, we debated it on the low end with, with some of the Nevada County folks who also keep bees down here, and they, they had some good reasons why Nevada County adopted forty-eight beehives as our closest neighbor. Um, there's some different land use dynamics in Nevada County, they, they, I think have a lot less available land for beekeeping than we do, and they have some other dynamics that are in play. I don't personally feel that forty-eight's the right number for Placer County. On the other hand, I heard from a lot of beekeepers, keepers who said, "Hundreds too low." Um, and a lot of that feedback is based on the beekeepers and what kind of truck they have, and how many beehives that truck holds, and it's kind of a practical matter, but if my truck holds a hundred and twenty beehives, I really like to fill it up just from a business efficiency standpoint. And I am completely recognize that and am sympathetic to that. Um, and I think that's a number that I, I hope we can, we can have a good discussion about, and, and if, uh, there's beekeepers that wanna advocate for a different number, I mean, I think, on the one hand, any number we pick, someone's gonna say it doesn't fit for their, their business model, and so any number's probably gonna not work perfectly for.
Can I ask a question, Josh?
Yeah, please.
I know it's a workshop, so I don't know.
Yeah, absolutely.
I don't wanna interrupt you.
Please.
But, um, I really appreciate the way you went to the community and got information and understood the conflicts and the issues that are going on to help direct this. I do wanna encourage you, I think, to also look at best practices. It sounds like you're doing that with Nevada, and keep reaching out, you know, because I, I think sometimes the, the ordinance can lean into best practices, you know, you have some density things, and the question, it sounds like we're not set on a number, we're trying to figure out, you know, what that is. Because, um, the trucks and people's interests and their land plot is all gonna go into this decision, but ultimately, there's a best practice with bees and what's best for the bees.
Yeah.
And, and that's, that's the question that I have in here, but.
Yeah. Yeah, a- and like any ordinance, a series of compromises, and really, in the purely scientific standpoint, a hundred's probably too many, but in the business, the practical and business need standpoint, a hundred may be too few, and so we're really trying to hit a sweet spot there, that works for the business model side of it, and doesn't blow out neighborhoods with too many bees.
Yeah.
And is, is kind of sustainable to, to the bees themselves, so I appreciate that.
And I know you care about this, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
We just wanna make sure someone's advocating for the bees that can't talk.
Absolutely.
So.
Yeah, a- and I, very, very good point, thank you so much for that. I, I will tell you to that point, um, a lot of my knowledge came from working for a large commercial beekeeper based here in Placer County when I was in high school, and I'll tell you that back then, they had a very different model that they've adapted since then, and at that point, their trucks, they had large three-axle flatbeds that held a hundred and twenty-eight beehives, and so every single bee yard they had was either a hundred and twenty-eight beehives or, um, almost two hundred and sixty beehives, because they do two loads in that yard. And they've gone completely away from that, and they use smaller trucks now, and their bee yards are all standardized at sixty-four hives, in ca- unless they're very, very remote and rural, and then they might put a hundred and twenty-eight, which is two truckloads instead of one truckload now. So that, that's, it seems like kind of a silly thing to regulate off the size of a truck, but the problem is that everybody's got a different truck too, so it's really hard to, you know, meet everyone's needs in that, and we're, we're doing the best we can through a series of compromises to, to hit as many of the boxes as we can, for So other, other key provisions in the ordinance would be to require an adequate water source for each bee yard, because the bees during the summertime do need a lot of water, and they will go forage for that water. Swimming pools are my number one source of complaint. Um, swimming pools are a lousy source of water, because most of the bees die when they go to a swimming pool, so it's not good for the bees, it's not good for the beekeeper, and it's not good for the swimming pool owner. On the other hand, people have a really low tolerance for bees in their pool, and we can't completely fix that issue, I can't control where the bees go, and they do fly about a mile and a half on average to forage from their hives, and I go out on a lot of complaints where, you know, people are just describing Armageddon in their swimming pool, and I go out and there's a dozen bees in their swimming pool, and I say, you know, "Hey, your pool skimmer's there, it's gonna take you about thirty seconds to skim your pool before..." And so that's not what we're trying to do, is keep every bee out of every swimming pool in Placer County, that, that's an impossible standard to meet, but what we are, the thing that we can kind of enforce and work with beekeepers to ensure through a standard, is that they have proactively addressed a water source, they aren't just leaving it up to the bees to go find one, but they've proactively identified a water source within a reasonable distance from their hives, they've either said, you know, "There is a natural water course that has water in it during the, um, summertime," or some of them will provide a water trough and put some cinder blocks in it for the bees to land on, and that's a really good solution actually, as long as they keep the water in it. Um, I, I've seen all kinds of things, you know, a dripping faucet with a hose draped over it that's kind of always wet that the bees can land on, there's a lot of good solutions, but that's a, that's a major point of conflict with the public, is that, that water source issue, especially around swimming pools. We're, again, not gonna have a perfect solution to that, but I, I'm hoping to alleviate a great deal of it. Uh, right now, we have no setbacks, and that's, uh, kind of that photo is a photo of a car, that's actually a public road up in Sh- in Sheridan or rural Lincoln, and you can see how close those bees are to that public road there as that car's driving by. And, um, that's something, just a, fifty feet may not, again, be a perfect setback, but that's kind of where the ordinance is gonna start out, and we can, we can talk about fifty feet versus a different distance, but I do wanna... But I do want to include setbacks from property lines and public roadways. Um, we may want to get a little more sophisticated and differentiate between a property line and a neighboring residence. That, that's another way that that could be addressed if uh, allow the beekeepers a little more flexibility while still protecting neighbor, neighborhood conflicts. Um, and then safety measures for daylight transportation. Bees do not fly in the dark. And so if you're trans, and beekeepers try to transport their bees mostly during the nighttime, but sometimes that's not possible. And so requiring, there's just some standard best practices again in beekeeping to uh, net the beehive. So if you pull into a McDonald's parking lot at 10:00 in the morning, you're not having bees, you know, there for the enjoyment of the other guests. So um, that, that's, that's a pretty standard thing. I think every beekeeping ordinance in the state pretty much has some just standard daylight transportation requirements in it around netting and security. So let's jump into the other topic, which I think will be a really fun, fun debate and, and elicit some um, fun comments. So this is the backyard beekeeping. And this is, this is a little bit different shift from what we've been talking about so far. And this would be the proposal to allow some small amount of backyard beekeeping in residential, single-family zoning. It, it is just not allowed right now, um, with the exception of the combining ag. So the, Placer County does have a fair amount of that residential, single-family dash AG zoning, which is combining ag. It's allowed there, but not in strictly residential, single-family. So the proposal or the concept to um, bring to you, and I, I'm really looking forward to your feedback on this, is to allow a small number of beehives. Four is the number I've thrown out there. Um, it really doesn't work for a variety of practical reasons to have one beehive. If you're a beekeeper, you need at least two beehives for, there's kind of an economy of scale and some of the equipment plus beehives usually are not perfectly the same. And if you've got a weak hive and a really strong hive, you can kind of balance them out and help them both be a little more sustainable if you have at least two. Throwing out the number of four for debate, but it's not uh, you know, not set in stone or married to it by any means. Um, recognize that there's a fair amount of it out there right now. Uh, people I think in large part are operating under the assumption that if they don't generate a complaint and they're a good neighbor, the county's probably not going to bother them, even though it's not allowed in their zone district. Um, so kind of recognizing that we'd like to legitimize the people that do have an interest in doing so potentially. Um, small number again, we're not talking 50 hives in a backyard, we're talking four or less. And then again, with those safety measures, and really you can't achieve in a typical residential, single-family lot, you can't achieve a 50 foot setback, for instance. And so addressing that through screening requirements would, which would be some sort of an impenetrable barrier at the property line so that the bees have to fly up and over that barrier and exit the property above head height. So we require like a six foot high barrier that extends out at least six feet on either side of the hive. So we have seen some conflicts where the neighbor kind of aimed their beehives, put them right on the fence line, aimed the beehives right at their neighbor and used them, almost weaponized their beehives a little bit. So we don't want, we want that to be a clear standard that you can't do stuff like that, obviously. Um, in, in speaking with the, oh, go ahead, please, yes.
I, maybe my colleagues know a lot more about beehives than I do. And I see boxes and don't know if that's a beehive.
Yeah.
You, you say four, but what is a beehive?
So this picture here has two beehives in it. And um, kind of the word hive or colony are kind of synonymous. So that the boxes themselves are equipment that bees live in. And then a colony or a hive is the actual living organism of a unit which consists of a queen, which is the reproductive female and all the workers, which are the non-reproductive females that do all the other work and then drones. So there's, there's typically a colony will have three types of bees in it. The drones aren't necessarily there all the time. But really it's a queen and a number of worker bees in a single piece of equipment. Or, and that, you'll see beehives that are one box deep when they're a small hive without much honey production. And you'll see beehives that are six, six boxes deep if they're in a huge nectar flow and it's a really big, strong hive that's just bringing in nectar like crazy. So they can really vary in height, but that single unit there is a box with some frames with comb in those frames and then a queen and some worker bees.
Is there acceptable range number of bees in a hive? Cause I'm sure they can get really big or be small and you know.
Yeah, there's um, it's extremely variable, both within an individual beehive and some, it's, it's just like any other kind of livestock almost where they're very selectively bred for certain optimal characteristics. And some, some do better than others. So you'll have a really strong queen that has a really strong hive and you'll have a queen that's not as productive and with a smaller hive. But um, and then the time of year, really they, they stop reproducing during the winter and go into more, it's not true hibernation, but a much less active state when it's cold. And then in the spring, they just get rearing and ready to go so that when those nectar flows come on, they're, it's a really big hive. And so, I mean, the variability could be anywhere, I would say from 5,000 bees in a hive up to, you know, close to 100,000 bees in a hive in, in some real extremes. The average is probably that 20 to 30,000 bee range.
Maybe one more question.
Sure.
And that is, you know, there's killer bees, I've heard murder bees, I've heard all these things. There's probably limitations on the species that are allowed and
Yes.
that can be in, in these boxes producing.
Absolutely. And that's where I started off with, we're talking about the honeybee Apis mellifera. We're not talking about any other species of bee. Um, Africanized honeybees are a very close cousin. They're, they're Apis, they're same genus, different species, they can interbreed and that is a concern. Um, they are in the United States to some extent. And the, one kind of saving grace for Placer County is that one of the other characteristics besides extreme aggressiveness that Africanized honeybees have is that they do not store honey. Um, the bees we have are called European honeybees. That's just kind of the, the industry term for the species is the European honeybee to differentiate from say the Africanized honeybee. And European honeybees are adapted well to a cold climate where you have a long period in the cold winter with no nectar. And so their, their way of adapting to that is to store a bunch of honey. They're wired to, when there's a nectar flow, they store a bunch of honey. And then when there's no nectar, they live off that reserve food source. Africanized honeybees don't do that. They, when, when they don't store a bunch of honey and when the nectar flow ceases, they're, they're adapted to tropical climates where, hey, when this species of flower quits blooming, I'm going to up and move the whole hive to, and find a new nectar source. And so Placer County's a little bit more inhospitable, not to say that some, some could not exist here for a time period, but it's less likely. There's also hybrids between the two that kind of meet in the middle and they may be more aggressive than normal. There's also European beehives that are really nasty and aggressive and a good beekeeper will inch those queens and so they no longer contribute to the gene pool of the honeybee. So um, it, it's really, you can have really aggressive European bees. Bee aggression, I think, is, is something we, we would address through kind of our nuisance process. And, and I think we will have a general catch-all. Hey, despite what this ordinance says, if there's any other bees that the ag commissioner deems to be a nuisance, we can take action on that as well. So that would be my hope. Yes.
Buttons not. Um, you mentioned the screening of being six feet. Why only six feet? Do bees not fly over six feet?
No, so the idea is we've all, we've all heard the term bee line. So like make a bee line and, and when we hear that term, we think that's a straight line, right? I'm going to go the straightest, straightest route possible. And that's actually based in nature. Bees fly in straight lines. And so if we aim the entrance of the hive at you, the bees are going to fly straight out of the hive towards you, right? And the issue becomes when someone like the neighbor's walking on their property and the beehive's aimed right at them. Um, bees are very visual and they react through their eyesight a lot. And just to go into the biology a little more, the majority of worker bees are either doing stuff, functions inside the hive or they're foraging for food and other uh, or resources, so nectar and pollen and things like that. However, there's a third task which bees do, which is called a guard bee. And that's a bee that hangs around, hangs out around the outside of the hive. And they're in a much more aggressive mode, they're looking for threats. And, and if they perceive a threat, they're going to go, you know, sting that threat in a lot of instances. And so the thing, just based on that bee biology that we don't want is a visual cue. When the neighbor comes out or say the neighbor's mowing their lawn or the kids are jumping on the trampoline next door or anything like that. We don't want those guard bees to have that visual cue on the neighbor. Um, and we also don't want just the average bee traffic out of that hive to be crossing at an elevation below head height. So the average person being, you know, no more than six feet taller. So six foot fence is pretty standard, it's consistent with a lot of our other zoning code. Uh, you know, if we required an eight foot barrier, we would get it, get sideways on some of our other fencing rules and whatnot. Um, so that, that's a pretty practical number. Um, and it's based in some of the, the biology and behavior of bees to where they, they, if they cross the property boundary at six feet or more, they're not going to be just physically blundering into people if nothing else.
The reason I ask is because I had a neighbor three years ago in my house in Rockland who had a beehive. And uh, fortunately or unfortunately, he, their bees would always come to a certain rock in our pool and always drink from it. And you would see that bee pattern coming back and forth as we're in the pool. And they flew over the top of my house, which is 20 feet high. So at what distance does that bee go over six feet and get to the neighbor's yard or to across the street? Cause it was literally over 200 feet that bee flew to get to my pool.
Yeah, and, and they, they're entirely capable of flying higher than six feet. And they can go up and over and around, a, a, and we're not trying to adjust that. But right when they leave the beehive, that's where the, the traffic from all over your neighborhood, all kind of concentrates and condenses into that flight pattern as they return to their hive or as they leave it immediately. And that's where we have the most control over the situation from a regulatory standpoint and the most risk to the immediate neighbors. We can't control what the bees do a mile from their house, right? But we can control the situation in which they may exist um, on the property where they reside.
Okay, uh, another concern that I'm thinking is that one, those bees multiply and there's another queen and she takes off.
Mm-hmm.
Which we've had in our neighborhood as well. It was always the next door neighbor who all of a sudden had a thousand bees in her driveway and couldn't get in her driveway. Or uh, it was on a tree in their yard and their kids couldn't go play. So how do you control that?
So, so that's, that's how bees multiply is, you know, we've heard of a swarm of bees, right? And so what happens is in the spring, as I mentioned, the bees multiply like crazy. And so the hive goes from a small kind of winter status into a much larger status. And when they reach a certain size, their biology again instructs them to produce some new queens and leave those, those unhatched queen larvae uh, behind in the hive. And then half of the workers with the old queen go and seek out a new location. And that's how bees multiply in nature. A responsible beekeeper will recognize that at a certain time of year, kind of in that March, April timeframe, my beehives are getting really big, they're going to swarm if I don't proactively do something. And so what a responsible beekeeper will do is actually artificially swarm their bees. It's called creating a nucleus hive. So I'll take one really big hive and split that into two or three smaller hives and put a new queen in each of those hives so that I don't lose half my bees, because that's not good for me as a beekeeper. And it also protects the neighborhood from having 10,000 bees landing in the tree in my front yard, kind of a thing. And so we've actually, uh, that was some of the great feedback we received from the beekeepers at the July 13th ag commission meeting was, hey, we need a provision for that. Because if I can have 20 beehives on this property, but then I have to create nucleus hives. And so all of a sudden I go from 20 hives to 50 hives for a short period of time. How does that work within our ordinance? Because that's, that's an important part of, of being a responsible beekeeper. And so we've actually also included, this is a little more technical than I wanted to share with you, but I'm happy to do so. Um, for a short period of time, for up to like 30 days, you can have, say where you would normally have, I think if the ratio is three to one, so if you're allowed 20 regular full-size hives, you'd be allowed, as we propose it, 60 nucleus hives, which are much smaller. So the same net number of honeybees on the property, but spread out over 60 smaller hives instead of 20 larger hives. Sure. Alrighty, so that, that is the extent of my presentation today. And like I said, I'm going to grab my notepad and I'd love to, um, either from the commission or the public, I'd love to have additional feedback on this. We want to, I think it's important, just my closing comment would be, on a lot of these issues, I think it's important to remember that right now, you've seen what our existing ordinance is, there's no rules in place, there's no setbacks in place, there's no acreage ratios in place. There's no distances between commercial apiaries or bee yards in place. None of that stuff exists right now. So I think all of this will help alleviate some of the, the common conflicts we have. But at the same time, we're also entering in a new territory and we don't have any experience with some of these numbers. And so we're, we're doing our best to hit something that works for everyone.
Well, thank you, Josh. Uh, comments or questions?
Yeah, I have a question. I have a question on page 12 of your presentation.
Back. Which, which slide is that?
It was
This one?
Just out, yeah, that one right there.
Yeah.
You want to limit the maximum size of a single bee yard to 100 hives? And then five hives per acre. What is a minimum acreage? That you can have? If we're going to go into residential as well, and now you're having two hives per household and say every house wants to have their beehives, there's what, four or five houses to the acre?
Yeah.
And now we're in a residential section that has maybe 500 hives.
Yeah.
So if I'm a commercial bee guy, now you're limiting me to how many I can have. But if I'm in a residential section, there is really no limitation.
Yeah, and that's the exact comment we've discussed with our, our planning staff that are here today. We've had those conversations, so I appreciate that, that's very astute. So there, there's a couple, a couple of ways I would answer that. So the commercial beekeeping is where we're, we're proposing the, which is 10 hives and more. Um, defined as commercial beekeeping would be allowed in, we're not changing the zone districts where that's allowed. So it's allowed in agricultural zone districts. The typically the smallest zoning you'll see and the planning staff, EJ or maybe George can correct me if I'm wrong. But I think a residential, single-family goes down to what, 2.3 acres is, or is there smaller, is there 100,000 square foot?
Yeah, 10,000 square foot.
Okay, so some of the, some of the RA zoning gets pretty small and that does allow beekeeping right now. But I think more commonly you would see bees on that, you know, 2.3, 4.6, 10, 20 acre zoning. And so on a 2.3 acre parcel, that would be, you know, at five hives per acre, that would be 10 hives total on 2.3 acres. To your point, theoretically, if you've got five houses in resident, per acre in residential, single-family and they each have four hives, that would be 20 hives of the acre.
Right.
My math is right?
That's right.
And that would be far more than are allowed. Uh, couple of things we've talked about. One is the likelihood that would, that would occur that all five houses in a residential, single-family type neighborhood would have four hives. So they, all five houses in that acre would all maximize the opportunity within this proposal. I think that's pretty unlikely, but at the same time it is within the realm of possibility. The other thing we've talked about, and I should have, should have mentioned it a minute ago, is that we've talked about what kind of approvals or by right status backyard beehives would have. Um, going back to the, the hen poultry or backyard ordinance that we addressed a number of years ago, I believe that was kind of a by right thing. If you stay within these confines, you don't get a permit from the county for your six chickens or whatever is allowed. Um, we've talked about that approach versus some sort of neighborhood notification and process through which the planning director and the ag commissioner would work through some sort of approval process. Or we've talked about anything all the way up to an administrative review permit where there's actually staff review and an application and um, some sort of pretty significant review. Kind of balancing out again, a series of compromises. If we require an administrative review permit that costs several hundred dollars, is it likely that anybody's going to apply for that versus just for, for the allowance of four beehives, you know, five, four beehives? Am I really going to be excited about spending hundreds of dollars and going through an administrative review permit process? Or am I just going to do it and I hope I don't get caught? We don't really want to encourage that kind of a scenario if, if there's a lesser standard that still allows the beekeeper to talk to their neighbors and make sure we're not exactly putting 20 beehives in a one acre area that's residential in nature. So um,
Okay.
Yeah. Don't, don't know that that's a solution, but it's some of the conversation we've had.
Right, just, I don't think you can compare chickens to bees because chickens don't fly and don't multiply like bees do and put out a queen and end up on my neighbor's driveway and I don't get a phone call. I don't get a phone call at noon because I'm a farmer and they're like, can you come pick these up?
Right.
And I'm like, no, I'm not. I don't raise bees.
Yep.
So that was my concern is, is if all of a sudden people wanted to do that, how many would be there?
Yeah.
Or what would be allowed in that city ordinance?
So we're, we're still working on, I think, what would be a, a reasonable, uh, vetting process through the county to ensure that we head off, we kind of proactively head off potential conflicts and actually look at the place where the bees are proposed without doing something that's kind of over, over regulatory to the point where it discourages compliance.
Okay.
Okay. Other questions of the commission? All right. If not, Sue, do we have any public comments?
Actually, I have one more.
Just one more.
Sorry. As a grower, I've used a lot of bees. We farmed about 1,500 acres of honeydews and also prunes. So I know how important bees are to the, to the agricultural world. Um, you had mentioned that there were 78 registered beekeepers. Is that just 78 registered in Placer County? Or do you have, if I move or as a grower and I would farm in Sutter County and Yuba County and then Placer County, are those bees supposed to be registered in each county, those hives?